Good evening, we have a forum at 6:30, we'll call the meeting to order. There was a mix up on scheduling with Zoom, that's why we couldn't get in and it was late getting going, so we apologize for that.
First up is Jonathan Carr.
Hi there, hi everyone.
Hello.
I'm here to, I guess, talk about a parking plan for our car cider house business on River Drive, 295 River Drive. I was advised by Tom Quinlan to sort of expand our parking area to accommodate a tasting room we're putting in by the farm stand. Well, an outdoor tasting area. In any case, I forwarded a map to Mr. Dwyer showing, I guess, an idea that I wanted to run by the board just to see if that, it seemed like a good idea to you. It essentially be to add, extend the driveway across the frontage of the lot.
See if I can shrink this to a more manageable.
Right. That lower portion there that looks like it's on fire is my orange highlighter. And it would basically be to extend the current driveway kind of across the lot frontage and to add another curb cut. I don't know, does that drawing, does that make sense to the?
How big, how large is that parking area? I mean, how many cars can you put there?
Well, I would estimate about eight cars, you know, if you allow a 10-foot width for each parking space, is that? I don't know if that would, I don't know what customer it is.
10, 10 foot is normal, that's fine.
Yeah. You could get eight to the, kind of, on one side, you could probably fit another two by the farm stand, so maybe, maybe 10 total.
Is it, are you calling for one curb cut all the way along, or is it an in and an out?
Yeah, an in and an out is the idea. You know, so it'd be adding another curb cut at the, at the other end of the frontage, opposite where we currently have our driveway.
Okay.
So what happens if you get like, I mean, so you're going to, you're talking a very small tasting sample.
We, we are, we're talking like five picnic tables outdoors, fair weather only, weekends only. You know, we're not really sure what to expect. Obviously, if we're swamped, we might have to go to a reservation system. We don't, you know, we don't want to jam up the neighborhood. We just really kind of want a low-key space to just, you know, get a few more people in.
I mean, your, your, your plan looks somewhat reasonable. Just be aware that you cannot park on Route 47. And if you do park on Route 47, I mean, if you had one car once a month, there'd be one thing. But if you start parking routinely all the time, you will be asked to somehow stop. To go to even go so far as to shut down your business. So be aware that if we approve this, you're going to, you could be tight on parking and you could be creating your own self a problem because you don't have much parking.
Right, well, let me just ask you then, is, is having a wider curb cut, is that possible, or is it?
You know, I'm not sure what a wider curb, you could not have a continuous curb cut, no. Because it will be a disaster pulling in and out and backing out to Route 47. And Route 47 is somewhat of a busy street at times, so that would not be a good traffic design idea. Normally, standard parking requirements is two square feet of parking per square feet of building. I don't know how big your buildings are, but I doubt very much you have two square feet of parking there. Now, you do have a little bit of a, get, get out of jail free card, if you would, because you are agricultural, you follow the agricultural exemption. However, we cannot waive every single requirement, and you should be providing reasonable parking on your property.
Right, well, I guess my, my justification, I think, was saying like five picnic tables. I calculated square footage on that basis because that's just the only seating. So, so I guess, I assume that the, that this parking plan could handle that. And if, you know, there are people waiting around, then we're just going to have to ask them to move on, so.
Yeah. Wasn't the last time we asked for a demarcation, where exactly is the property line? And how far off the property line will the parking begin? And Mark Dunn made a real good point. People cannot back, you cannot have people backing out on River Drive. There has to be an entrance and an exit, so they can turn around and head out.
Right, that's the idea, that would be, it would be like a one-way, it would be enter one side.
More clearly, just the on-fire yellow and red there doesn't indicate how many parking places, where the drive is going to be, how they're going to back in and out.
Well, no, it's showing, so is the North Drive going to be your entrance or your exit?
That would be the entrance.
The cars are going to come in.
Yeah.
Going to go behind your shrubs.
Yeah.
And they are going to park here. So there is a line of shrubbery there.
Yeah.
So the shrubbery and the fence will be taken down, or will they, will that remain?
No, we intend to keep that, but then when they pull out of their parking spaces, they'll just proceed southerly and they'll pull forward into the exit and they'll be able to have a clear view of the road when they pull out facing forward.
So the South driveway, the new South driveway will be the exit?
Correct.
Okay, and do we still want to bring up that bylaw that was North Lane? Where there cannot be any obstruction for exiting a driveway?
That's, that's the general bylaw, there's no agricultural exemption to that. So you'll be responsible for satisfying the select board and the building inspector that you have, you have adequate sightlines.
And, okay, well, we can trim that, you know, the shrubbery accordingly to make sure we have good sightlines there.
Oh, I just want, I want to clarify, we're sort of in an unusual situation here. We have some direct jurisdiction because you are in a limited business district. But we're also being asked to sort of review this, vet it for the select board because they're the ones who would be issuing the license, or approving the license. So that's why we're in this position that we're sort of sharing jurisdiction with the select board here. But they did ask us to weigh in on it, which is, but also because you're in a business district. So, Joe, to your point, the actual layout of the roadway should be this line down here, that should be the edge of the right-of-way. So the, what, the buildings that have been built here, the high tunnel, which is plastic if I recall correctly.
Right.
And the farm stand, which is really a closet on wheels, are much closer than 50 feet to the, the front.
Now, the farm, the farm stand is 50 feet from, off the, off the frontage line. The high tunnel's a little closer.
You think there is 50 feet between here and here?
I measured.
Okay.
Well, where, where is the property line, 50 feet?
Here.
It's 50 feet from the River Drive, but is that the property line?
Yes, on, on the plot plan, this is the property line and not the edge of pavement.
Okay. Didn't seem that way, but all right.
Um, I'm not remembering what the adjacent, but it looks like your curb cuts in and out are very close to your, the edges of your front. I just wondered if there's any conflicts on any adjacent prop, you know, that you would have traffic entering and exiting too close to each other?
I can answer that, I go by here twice a day. The one to the north is a field for horses. And the one for the, to the south has a building on it, but the building is over in the area where my cursor is. And I'm not sure exactly where the driveway is, but it's not heavily used.
So that's not an issue, good.
That should not be an issue with that location.
And then as far as the extra curb cut goes, would I have to get another driveway permit for that, or how would that work?
You should talk to DPW about getting another driveway permit for that.
Okay.
And they will, you could tell them that, we've had a discussion with them in the past about being careful about issuing two driveway permits. But in this case, it would be appropriate, and you could tell them that the planning board has looked at it.
Okay.
So the new curb could be the one on the set?
Yeah.
Yes, the existing one is on the north, okay. I don't have any other concerns, do we, you already talked about the sign, right?
I believe we approved the sign a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the parking plan subject to reconsideration if it causes problems.
I have a second, Ted.
Here's again, Bill.
Approve the parking plan subject to reconsideration if problems arise.
Okay. Okay, we have motion, a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously, okay?
Thank you very much.
Welcome, good luck.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay.
So let me get this out. And on a very similar topic, Denise Barstow-Mans.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Denise Barstow-Mans, I am coming to you from Barstow's Dairy Store and Bakery in Hockenham, Route 47. It's a diversified farm stand from Barstow's Longview Farm, which is our 216-year-old dairy farm. And we are applying for an entertainment permit.
What, what kind of entertainment are you anticipating?
Um, we didn't know that we needed an entertainment permit in the past, so I'm here making this right. And we sometimes have burger nights where we have a band of local awesome old dudes that come, we do not pay them, and they play for two hours.
Just one night a week?
It's like one night a month, and it's not every month.
One night a month?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought it was more than that, okay.
And they're done playing by seven o'clock.
Is that, that outdoor?
Outdoors.
How did you find out you needed a permit?
Um, we were on another select board meeting and they were here, having a hearing for an entertainment license. And I emailed Jennifer and asked if we needed, and she said yes, so.
Okay.
And you have enough parking to accommodate the people who come for your burger night?
Yep.
So again, this is one where we have sort of, we don't have necessarily direct jurisdiction, but the select board has asked us for input based on our expertise in sort of semi-commercial operations like this. And you said it's over by, they're over by six?
Maybe play five to seven.
Five to seven.
And there have been times in the past where they've come like in the wintertime on a random Sunday or something, so. It's kind of just, you know, the entertainment permit looks like it's for the year, so we would do, it gives us the opportunity to bring in some other stuff, if I'm understanding that correctly.
This is weekends?
Um, the burger nights are on Tuesdays when they happen.
So is the five to seven time slot something you're comfortable with?
Um, yeah, I, is it like?
How about if we just say over by seven o'clock, might be, might be more appropriate.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, because the permit from, the permit comes from the select board and it specifies hours and, you know, who can play. So, but we just say over by seven, and do they use this just acoustic, or do they have amplifiers, or?
They do have amplifiers, yeah.
Okay. Okay, probably just say over by seven. So just.
Haven't heard any complaints from Shell, so it must be popular.
I was thinking the same thing, Mark. And we would hear.
I think Shell loves Barstow.
When you get a hamburger, oh, do you put it in the plastic or paper bag?
Subject to whatever the law says.
It's kind of a joke here. Okay, so I'll make a motion to recommend the select board issue an entertainment license with bands not playing past 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second.
We got three seconds, so.
I'll pick Mike.
I wanted to go on the record.
Any other discussion?
I'm kid crying.
Hearing them, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck Denise, yeah.
Next up, we have, I guess it's Joey Adams behind one, one gla, one, one plus nor.
Hello.
Hello.
It's Jesse Reynolds, that's me.
Okay. Jesse Reynolds, okay. And remind me the street address here?
It's 71 Morris Plain Road, Lawrence Plain Road, sorry. And Hallymouths.
Okay, I did send around his, his drawing, but I'll share it. It, he sent, he sent me an email with the drawing at the end of last week. It was not attached, it didn't show up until today, I think, but we have.
Aerial photo.
About it.
The red line.
I'm sorry, that's not it, this is it.
Yeah, it's an aerial photo, I think, with a red outline, yeah.
Yes. Get this one out of the way.
Correct, yes, that's it. All the vehicles at the property are gone though, there's no vehicles there. It's all cleaned out nice.
And everything was going to be held behind the fence, I believe.
So, previously, someone had been selling cars in this general area, are they still doing that?
No, not at all.
Okay.
What about during the winter, they're not going to be doing that during the winter anymore?
Wayne passed away.
Oh, right.
Yes. Yes, I've been talking to her, she basically has like a couple cars left and she's just basically going to send them to the junkyard or whatever. She's not really looking to do anything else like that.
How do you define that property line?
That's the area that we, well, um, that's the area that we rent, that John said that like that's where we can put the cars. But obviously, I won't even be using, not even half of that. But that's like what the area that I pay the rent for.
Okay.
So part of one building and the open area?
Yes, correct.
And remind us how many vehicles you were looking for?
I would say like 10, you know, if anything, obviously, I would contact you guys for any more, but starting small. Yeah, I'd be happy with 10, that'd be a good goal for me, but who knows what the future could bring?
Okay, so John, John's going to continue to use that little first bay on the eastern part of the building for his, for his crafts. And you're going to use the other rest of the building for your auto repair and sales?
No repair, just sales, yeah.
No repair, you're not going to do any repairs?
No.
Okay.
What was this again, a class two?
Yes.
Yeah. Just use, use cars, like, you know, just, maybe hopefully in the future, obviously get my own, go to auction and stuff. But for now, I just look for cars around, you know, Craigslist, Facebook, and just do researching and friends and family.
Jim, is this aquifer protection?
Um, no. He's just outside of it. The aquifer protection ends about, it's a kind of a funny shake. But where the bill, where he, where the building and where he's using is not in it. The, it's possible that along the road, part of it might be in it, but where the building is, is not in it. Where he's outlined in red is not any aquifer.
So the ice cream stand will still remain?
Yeah, she's still there. She works from 12 to 8, I think every day, I'm pretty sure. I think maybe Sunday she, like, maybe like a few hours different or something, but I'm not positive. But we're in the back and we're not, you know, everybody's all nice, we all get along, everything's good. I told her, like, I help her, like, little things and stuff. She's happy for me and stuff, like, what I told her what I want to do.
Uh, Bill, you working on them?
I, I am.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to waive further approval for use of an existing commercial site for used car sales. All vehicles to be behind the existing fence.
Uh, will there, will you add your name onto the existing sign out front?
Um, hopefully in the future, but I haven't done anything like that yet, still, like.
You're just going to advertise online, or?
Yeah, this, you know, just add through my name and stuff, and I haven't even honestly picked out a name and stuff, but like, yeah, keep it small and simple, you know?
Okay, I'll just add to that motion to return for sign approval in the future. So if you do put up a sign, we want to take a look at it.
Okay, that's fine.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, very good, good luck.
Yeah, thank you so much, I really appreciate everybody.
Hope it goes well.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see. Please.
And.
Now, we had one person drop out and one person drop in. Eric Schwartz, are you connected with Jay Jasper?
Mr. Schwartz.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What can we do for you, Mr. Schwartz? You're on mute again.
Hear me, I'm sorry, I had to put my phones on.
Hear you now.
Great, yeah, we're, we're a cannabis cooperative and had, have been recently taking a look at 319 River Drive. You know, we're an ethical, local business that is looking to maintain the organic agriculture that is currently, you know, happening there. But would like to, you know, possibly enter into it from an adult-use cannabis perspective, but also an educational perspective. So it's an area that we also wish to, you know, should we, should we get further with the property, you know, have education there in addition to continuing its organic agricultural farm, basically. I, I guess, I guess, real quick from my side, we want to make sure first it's zoned accordingly, just so we don't continue, you know, further with it. And, you know, we quite honestly just want to get an idea of the community itself as far as that property in particular, and whether that might be something that, you know, folks would be open to, basically. Uh, we're in, we definitely are in research phase currently. Um, and I'm sorry Jay couldn't be here today, and I'm sorry, I'll turn my video on real quick. Sorry Jay couldn't be here today, he's, he's actually working as for no, for juggling jobs in our entrepreneur, so that's currently where we're at. But yeah, I'm sorry, I'll stop there, so yeah, we're just kind of looking to figure out if it's owned and want to get the temperature of the community.
Well, you're zone agriculture residential, so organic, normal organic farming is no problem. You can continue doing what they're doing there today. As far as raising cannabis, that requires a special permit from the planning board and we have, we have not issued one yet, if you grow any cannabis, there's a whole list of requirements to be grown inside undercover, no, no light exposure and on and on and on. You will run into some, you may run into some severe resistance from neighbors. Somebody else had proposed a, another potential cannabis growing operation about, I don't know if it was a half a mile away from where you are, and the neighbors really made a lot of noise about it. So just letting you know, those are the facts.
So in the agricultural residential district, you are limited to tier-one growth facility, which I believe is 5,000 square feet of canopy? So.
319 the old.
Got it, thanks for that clarification.
Exactly where, can you describe the location again, like, the number?
I think it's south of Carl's Excavating, I'm showing it's five college.
It's the five college farm, it's the Montgomery Greenhouses.
Oh, that, that land is AP. Oh, that that land is APR, so uh cannabis is not allowed.
Is it APR land? Yeah, wait, it's still in a research phase, so.
No, the whole thing is APR, Joe?
Well, pretty much so. They carved out that cell tower there, but uh, and then they had an agricultural exemption for packing flowers, and for packing uh their heirloom tomatoes. Uh, yes, pretty much, I think it's all APR.
Yeah, yeah, I would I would recommend Eric, Mister Schwartz, I recommend you go to the uh, assessors office and find out exactly what is APR and what is not before you get into it.
Right, right.
Yeah, Dan Zadon, Dan Zadonik in the assessors office can direct you with that.
Got it, yeah, yeah, got it. Okay, yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Do you know, do you know the asking price yet, by the way?
No, no, not yet.
Well, before you make any.
Right, that's why we're here.
Well, I didn't grab three wallets. So, because we're up against some heavy hitters.
Yeah, the um, just just by way of background, the the reason the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources, does not allow cannabis growth on APR property, is that they accept federal dollars for land preservation. And they uh poured, put the federal dollars in the same pool with the state dollars. So every APR in recent history has a piece of federal money in it. However small, and they have not seen fit to distinguish between, oh, this is state money, so you can grow anything you're allowed to grow in the state versus, um, you know, they they just say if there's federal money in there and until it's, legal at that level, we won't even consider it, even though it is, uh, a crop.
Yeah, Mister R, yeah, that, we're definitely still navigating that.
Bill explained it very well, thank you.
Okay. Alright, anything else?
No, that's it on my side, thanks so much.
Alright, good luck.
Okay, well, we're at first and third Tuesdays of the month, if you have any questions.
Excellent.
Mister Komiya. Good evening, sir.
Board, how are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good. Um, alright, so um, I know that there's probably a couple of things that we're trying to work on, kind of concurrently, I don't know as far as your priority, what you may be looking at. Um, I think as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, and Jim is aware of this, that um PVPC is working on a model document or model, set of regulations for battery or energy storage battery. Um, still doing some of the uh initial research, particular to, um, regulations that it may may have been passed in Massachusetts. I think that it's still kind of novel. Um, but we don't have anything yet for that, but um, that was a question, I guess. Um, you know, as far as how you're, how you may be looking at, um, your upcoming town meeting schedule, and if some, if that is something that needs like be put first.
I think Bill suggested that there's no urgency here.
Yeah, we we would, it would be nice if we could get it for the fall, Ken, but it doesn't look very feasible. And rather knock ourselves out, we'd kinda like to see what you, what the PVPC comes up with for that.
Great, yeah, we are working with, um, as I mentioned, we're working with three municipal planners, um, that are in the working group and I invite you, um, and I probably will invite you, Jim, to maybe a meeting, um, to share some of the insights um that you may have had um with regards to that and probably also, uh, utilize some of the documents that um, your, the the previous uh applicant before you um shared.
Yeah, that'd be great, sure.
Yeah, um, so we're, yeah, we're working.
What planning towns are, what planners from?
Um, I'm I'm working with the town, uh, the the planners from the towns of Munson, Ware and um Belcher Town. Um, so, um, Ware is, um, has put a moratorium on these types of structures. Um, so this is important to them, um, so they're, you know, gung ho about this particular project. Um, and I'm excited too, um, because we get to update some of our solar documents, um, and this is still novel and, um, new. Um, with that said, and I I am also sitting on a statewide, um, working group looking at siding of solar. I'm actually the only person from Western Mass um on that, uh, that state uh working group. Um, there's a lot of folks from the, um, um, some of the utility companies as well as some of the advocates. I think they're looking at, um, a whole bunch of different angles on how to approach um siding, solar in the future, um, and also within the context of their um incentives that they do provide to communities. Um, so I think, you know, it's uh, it's it's been interesting being a part of that process, but, I look forward to sharing with the board on some of those findings and some of those experiences, um, because I think it could be very helpful, um, not only for Hadley but for um everyone else out here in the Pioneer Valley.
Just a quick two cents on that, Ken, it's in, it's in the rest of the United States and different countries have different stances on solar. My daughter is looking to put up and her husband a house in a foreign country where they where they're going to be living, and they wanna put solar on it, and in this particular country, um, I don't wanna mention that because we're on TV and stuff, but you must put up that, you must use battery and storage and you don't put your solar back into the grid. So, different places have different stances on it.
Yeah.
I'll I'll say, Ken, I think we we will get a better product if we wait for the uh, for your uh, uh, model bylaw and uh you have some consistency with other communities too. We don't want people, uh, just uh darny over here because we're easier to uh, to to get through the permitting.
I mean, you, you've already made, taken a policy statement with regards to how you are looking at that particular, technology and that using it as a singular, you know, structure. Uh, so, no one will be coming to Hadley for the moment, um, at least, you know, not with this board. Um, so what I shared with you, it 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 was late, um, and I apologize for that. Um, but it's something else that we're working on, um, that came up in conversation and, I had shared this with the board, um, a, an example from Granby and since then I have uh made some, you know, just uh some, some changes based on how your zoning bylaw reads and how, um, you're, um, from from my experience in in working with Hadley for the past couple of years. Um, I guess, you know, one of the questions and at the last meeting, I reviewed the the discussion, it was to, um, discuss how the the land use um permits were issued. I had made some changes based on uh recommendation from Jim on how uh the the board handles public notices. I think uh the town of Granby's um was was unclear, um, but, uh, I think the the way that has been presented in your topic, in your copy um is clearer. Um, and that's specific to the requirements on how those public notices are published and posted. Um, with that said, um, obviously the formatting um will be changed and um there's, there's still some things to fill in, um, with regards to staff people that may be, um, um, useful or that may be useful at town hall to reach out to, knowing that, usually your zoning enforcement officer is the point person. Um, one of the questions that I did have, and I do recall this from a conversation, um, was that I think the town may have hired or was talking to someone with regards to like a land use coordinator. I don't know if that's something that's still happening, or if it makes sense that that person kind of be aware of, you know, navigating the permitting processes through both the the planning board, the ZBA and the conservation commission.
So we don't have a land use coordinator per se. Um, Shyla Davis was hired initially by the, conservation commission to fill uh the gap that was left when Jenna Stone resigned. And so she's sort of the conservation agent, although um she is relatively new at all of this, and I probably doesn't have, if there are licenses or permits required, she probably doesn't have, uh, any of those yet. Uh, but she is uh providing um, both administrative and a degree of technical support to the conservation commission. And she's the one that goes out with maybe one member of the conservation commission to see whether the wetlands have been flagged, um, properly, um. She is also doing some uh work with us. She's gonna be helping us with some of our uh, getting caught up with our minutes, which will also give her an education in uh, what it is we do. Uh, so she's on her way to being a land use coordinator, but um, I would wouldn't say that she would say she was there yet, uh, I think. Um, work in progress.
So probably it makes more sense to have the zoning enforcement officer be the point person initially, um, at the town hall, especially since uh Tom works full time. Um, so, okay, that's that's one of the questions. One of the other questions was your historic commission. Um, I know in some communities, um, they do have the power to regulate, what happens in a historic district, and I know that Hadley happens to have one, I think. Um, no, no, not an official one.
Ha- Hadley has a historic overlay district.
Okay.
And it, it it kind of is a gray area. Um, if you're using federal money for something, there's a whole list of requirements you have to do, but if you're using anything but federal money, um, you you really, it it it's kind of a, um, you must comply with the zoning bylaw, and we used to use the historic commission, um, as a unofficial reviewer of architectural plans. And about, what, two years ago now, Bill?
Uh, it's actually more, probably about four or five years ago.
They they requested not to do that anymore for whatever reason. So they've left it up to the planning board and so they really don't have any say in what goes on, um, architectural wise in the district anymore. And we have, I think we have three of them. We have the Russell Street and and uh West Street Collins area. We have the center of North Hadley and we have Hocken on those three areas that are listed on the National Register of Historic Places.
Okay, and so I guess a question, a follow-up question, as I'm still, you know, I recall from my time as town planner, that um, you know, the community I used to work in did not, um, establish at the town meeting at the time, those historic districts would give the power to the historic commission, to regulate. These, these three um neighborhoods are these historic um districts. Jim, those are, those have not been accepted by the town.
They've only been accepted as being listed on the National Register of Historic Places. They did, they, there was discussion at one point of trying to make particularly the West Street area, a historic area, and when the homeowners that were down over there, read what the restrictions would be, they were not in favor of it. So it never, it never went to town meeting.
That's very helpful.
And we do not have a demolition, demolition delay by law.
Right.
What's that by law, Bill?
Yeah, we do not have a demolition delay like Anderson of, well, some area of communities do. Okay, uh, we won't go there. We just don't have them, no sense.
Okay.
In the previous.
Getting back. And it's been, it's been my observation that, um, the applicants for solar, at least before this board, have primarily been Caucasian men. And for the benefits, tax credits, solar credits, whatever, are flowing, at least primarily to that population. How it is across the Commonwealth that this is a program that, could be interpreted as being racist in nature? Because it are the benefit, benefits are true to, how how do, how does the benefit accrue to somebody living in the inner city or living in a four-story? You know, they don't have a backyard or they can put solar on.
That is not a zoning topic.
But I think it's a, it's a topic, I, it's a topic that this Commonwealth should start looking at. Because in my, my.
That may be true.
I I think, I, I would, I would highly recommend we avoid that. It's racist.
Well, uh, honestly, Mike.
I wanna get it out there, may, may, maybe, may, maybe from the Gazette will report, start looking at that. It's actually benefiting for all, from all these solar uh deals that are going on.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that has to do with the role of the historic commission in Hadley zoning.
Well, I could, thought long enough, I could probably find something. Didn't the, wasn't the under rock ground where railroad?
We'll uh, we'll delegate you to to dig into that.
Thanks, oh, okay, but I just wanna get publicly out there. I think uh something is missing of this, program or has been put together. In terms of benefiting everyone, every, every possible citizen, as it is, whether or not they have a backyard, or a roof, that's all, oops.
Oh, yeah, actually, Mike, you may do better without uh, without video. There, you, there's a.
Yeah.
Kind of a big lag between uh your audio and your video.
Okay.
It's very garbled.
Yeah, if you keep your camera.
Shut it off, I, I, I know my battery just told me it's ten percent left, so, let's get moving, no more crazy questions, Ken, I promise.
Okay.
From the historical perspective and the historical commission, it was a very active board that had input in everything, that the planning board did for a while, and as it uh lost its steam, its enthusiasm, uh, they just were not even getting a quorum to meet, so it was delaying some of our site plan. So they asked just to be removed from the uh, the qualifications necessary, to have the color, et cetera, et cetera, and architectural design.
Yeah, thank you.
My wife is, my wife is now on the historical commission, Adriana from Bogota, and she asked me a very cute question the other day. She said she saw a book in my library and she said, Mike, do you think they know about this book written by, Silver Judd? That we have with.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, um, you know, this, this initial conversation was for you to take a look at, what was um composed for this. Um, I guess one of the follow-up questions, is if there are any particular, um, and I'll just quickly share my screen. Um, if I can.
It's Bill. I have to enable, but.
Oh, I'm I'm able, Bill.
Oh, you are, okay.
Um, is this, this section too? So, you know, we talk about common permits and licenses and, we usually split them up based on the different types of permits. Oftentimes, these are land use permits, so ones that would, you know, say that the planning board issues or the ZBA or the conservation commission. Um, but I I guess one of the questions is, you know, are there any particular uses that you wanna include here? We don't need to include this. Um, but I, you know, I spelled out at least some of the more longer, um, you know, aside from some of the commercial um site plan uh approvals and special permits that you may issue, um, some of the the bigger, um, more, uh, the ones that require probably, a lot more application material like solar and cannabis, um, I've included, you know, within the text. Uh, but I don't know if if. I've included, you know, within the text. But I don't know if if this necessarily needs to be here or. If you think that. You know, it it needs certain types of permits based on some of these initial headings that I have here.
Well, I think we saw just. Just a few minutes ago that Denise came in saying she didn't realize she needed an entertainment permit for the. What they were doing at the dairy and bakery. And I suppose on the one hand, if you don't list every single thing, you enable people to say, oh, I didn't know I needed that. But on the other hand, if you, if you don't list it somewhere. If if the only person who knows you need it, it keeps keeps the. Keeps the checklist in their head. That's not good either. So I I think it would be useful. It may. Take up some space and have to be. Weed it occasionally, but. I I think that. Yeah, there are things that people just don't realize apply to them.
I I agree, though. I think that's a good idea to have that list and just to have a little quality that it may not be complete.
Yeah, that's for sure. I mean, we're going to try to list everything, but there may be some omissions.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful. I think our. Our constituents would. Let me see if there's anything that's outstanding here. A lot of this is general language with regards to. You know, if someone were to. Arrive at this particular document at at the town hall. What if I want to build a new home or business that says start at the zoning enforcement officer building inspector? And I have some areas here that are in yellow. I know that there have been some updates to some of these processes. Like the MIPA process, which probably is rarely. Well, actually, I think, I don't know if Hadley's privy to this this particular MIPA process that's going on. For some solar development in North Hadley. I know Pelham and Amherst are currently going through this process, but I don't know what Hadley. And then just, you know, these are more notes for myself, the ones in yellow. But if there's, I guess, anything. In your review of this, that will be helpful to fine tune. I'm I'm just going to use for this particular section where it lists contact people, whatever's on the website. And the office where you can find them. Oh, this is a question. The building inspector, and I know Tom's on the call, but if the planning board knows this. How that. If the, how the. You know, is it is is he or she appointed on an annual basis? Is it?
I believe it's a three year appointment. I I am ready to be corrected by those who know more.
Mr. Quinlan.
Yes, it is. I'm only when they, when they signed or whatever, two years ago, over two years ago, it was only for one, but Tim brought it up to me at the last town meeting that. Then they found it is three years.
It is three years, okay.
Yes, I forget. Just found it right away. In the clerk's office.
Not so you serve at the pleasure of the select board, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Tom, I I know that we had just briefly spoken about. Jim had provided the name of Shyla or Bill, rather, Shyla Davis, who works as kind of the Conservation Commission's support. Do you do anything for supporting the Conservation Commission, other than saying you need to go to the Conservation Commission?
It it's actually a task on a program.
Okay.
You know, so any permit that's put in, anything, anything outside the envelope, we task it. She a lot of times can just answer, you know, the next time she's in, I'll check off the box and we're good.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think this is, this could be at least initially. A great document for the the town. If there's anything that you think. Needs to be addressed in here even more so. And and one of the things too is I'm gonna try to go through the town's website to determine if there happens to be. Forms that I can just hyperlink on this document as as that could be very helpful. For people that may not, you know, want to come to the the town hall. And can. At least access the forms from home or from a computer. But yeah, so this is the initial stab based on. You know, the test to develop permitting guide.
Tom and Dee Dee, if I can get the word document to you, can you send it around to people on the? Project coordination? I think they would like to. Be in on this. Early.
Yeah, I think that could, I think that could be helpful. And what I can do. Bill is also qualify it if if it's helpful to, you know, the town staff that. The planning board is we're taking the lead on this particular permitting guide. And this is coming from, you know, documents that we've used elsewhere. Let's determine whether or not your particular department oversees these permits or who does. If yeah, if if they're located on the website or whatnot, and just, you know, maybe list a couple of questions that. You know, Tom and Dee Dee can share around town hall.
That'd be great. If you could then, if you could put that package that and then send it to Tom.
I will do that.
And then they can get it around. Hi, guys.
You guys hear me? Okay, I know sometimes.
Is that your assistant clerk?
Yep.
So I know. For the permit program, they are going to be starting to do a thing where. They are going, we're gonna have a spreadsheet. So for every thing that's gonna come through as a building permit. So say a sign, for instance, or anything like that, it's going to be automatically. Tasked off to like planning board or. We're gonna have a check off list of where it needs to also be tasked off for any kind of permit. So, you know, especially like commercial, all that kind of stuff. Those will be things that will probably need to be tasked off to you guys. So hopefully that's gonna make things a lot easier too. And and it'll give people a better idea of where they need to start. Because a lot of times people put in permits and they have no idea that they need to go in front of you guys first or conservation. So I think that's gonna help tremendously too.
Dee Dee, and I I think it's an excellent idea, and I like the way you will be taking charge. As opposed to, it's on the website, just go look it up. No, it's a more friendly approach. Sometimes when you call. A bank, I mean, you get an 800 number in. The other smaller banks will say, how may I direct your call? I think that's basically what you're doing. And I I think it's a nice gesture and it shows a small town friendly atmosphere. We're trying to help people, not hinder them.
Exactly, exactly. And you know, that's why I was trying to show people, I even show them how to get onto the site. How to, you know, send their emails to Bill so he can then get everything ready for you guys. So then when the meeting's ready, he's got everything right there. So. Hopefully that will make a big difference.
Dee Dee, if I may, if if there's a way, I don't know if you're working with a cert- certain like permit vendor. If if you've already established some of those permits, and if if it's something that you don't mind sharing, I'd love to see. Like how you have initially have set up. You know, maybe like where you start out, what types of permits the building department would review and and how you have those moving. To the different entities. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you're more than welcome to come in and I can show you that part. You can also. Just by going on our website under the building department. You can actually just go to the online permitting and you can view. Because there are are public records. So you can, you know, view and at least get somewhat of an idea. And then I can always. Show you the back end of it.
Right. That's great. And and so this is this new for the town with regards to. At least the building department overseeing electronic permitting. Where you're, where someone can submit a permit online.
So when Tom was in Southampton. That's where he started using the permit program there. It's called PermaLink. And he had it in Sunderland. And then we started using it in Hadley. And West Hampton has it now too. And Long Meadow, quite a few towns have it. And what makes it easier too for the contractors is that. Once they sign in once with any town with PermaLink. They can actually sign into any other town using their same email password and everything, which makes it much easier for. Everybody all around.
Yeah, that's good.
What we have found occasionally is that people will. Ask us how their permitting is going. And tell us that they have filed electronically and they haven't heard from the planning board. And we have to break it to them that they didn't file with the planning board because we don't have electronic filing.
And and we are working on that. Has Scott gotten in touch with you?
I I I told them they built, they had, there is a. Planning board folder supposedly on the system. And I said, well, that's great. They built neither Bill nor I have a planning, have a town laptop or a computer. Can we use our own computers? Absolutely not. I says, well, then how do we get a computer? And Carolyn took a note, she said, I need to get, she says, who need one? I said, well, Bill and I need one. And she's well, work on that. And that was probably a month or so ago.
Okay, well, I also know Scott from the PermaLink program has. Things that are a little set differently. He does do planning board things also for some other towns. So I told him, you know, that he should get in touch with you guys and reach out and show you some different things, because I know the fire department. Is looking to do the same thing. Board of Health, they already started a program getting ready for them also. And actually, Terry, she has started getting a good bunch of your plans and especially site plans. Already scanned.
Okay, great.
Moving right along there.
Maybe we ought to work on getting an office first. Do we have, do we have any, any idea of where our. Our records are gonna be or are stored and are, where are we gonna be located?
Right now, everything. Yeah, right now, everything is in what used to be the select board meeting room on the second floor of town hall.
Yes.
So everything is dry.
Along with ZBA files and planning board files and conservation files and going to trying to find our stuff, at least the cabinets. I know what is in some of the cabinet because they're the labels that I put on it when we used to have the same office years ago. However, if you go looking around in there, there's probably. Oh, my goodness, I bet you there's 30 file cabinets or more in this room plus all kinds of other stuff. And less than half of them are ours. So it's a, it's a. It's a nice expedition to try to find a file of ours. I can't hear you, Tom.
I've never worked in a town.
We're missing most of what you're saying, Tom.
I'm sorry. Lean in towards her more.
I was saying, between Terry and Dee Dee, if they're doing it, our our organization is unbelievable now what they've got. Even plumbing and electrical now are by street instead of by year. It was impossible to find, you know, an old permit or anything looking by the year. So we're in, we're in really good shape. So she's working on yours and should be about the same.
The thing also is your scanner right now is in the that select board room, which makes it nice for her because she's able to pull your plans. And, you know, get them scanned right there. So she's not having to go all over the place. So for right now, it works.
That's great. Yeah, I mean, that that scanner was unused for a good period of time. But as it turned out, that was one fine investment that the town made because it's streamlining. I would say streamlined, maybe not the right word, but it's gonna be helpful in the long term for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I cannot believe all the scanning that she has had so far that she's gotten done. So it's it's getting there.
Good, good. Great. Okay, what else have you got, Ken?
Um, that's it. I, you know, I know that part of the work plan two includes. Looking at planning board rules and regulations, which I think this can actually feed into and be a natural segue into doing that work. I do have. You know, some of the documents that you've shared over time that. I guess may have been to address certain aspects of your rules and regulations and policies. That maybe can be compiled into one document. If that's something I think that the board probably wants, but. Yeah, that's just kind of the ongoing things. I guess if there happens to be any other work tasks besides those two things. I don't know. Is there any? Other topics zoning related or master plan related?
I think those, what you're working on is gonna help a lot. There there's, there's a decent amount of work there. Are you, are you, are you looking, are you getting light on your workload?
No, no, I mean, I I I just want to make sure that I'm doing. You know, if the planning board has priorities, which I know, you know, some planning boards do. But this is important work and I would have definitely advised this be part of any work plan. Is to do, you know, have a set of adopted rules and regulations for the board. So I'm I'm definitely happy working on that. But if there happens to be, you know, any additional research that you may be looking into or. Other things, I'm also happy, you know, to. Segue if I need to.
So the one thing, and I'm not sure we want to make this a priority right now, but as you've noticed over the last few meetings. We're having. Issues with food trucks.
Noticed.
And that's something that the bylaw, there's a town bylaw review committee looking at all of the bylaws. So food trucks, sort of the, you know, temporary vending is apparently becoming an issue. And it's an over, it has some overlap between the Board of Health, the Planning Board. Perhaps some other boards. Not sure who licenses food trucks apart from the Board of Health. I think maybe the select board does in some communities. So. You know, I I would say that I wouldn't ask you to. Make it a task, but if you, as you come across. Articles or discussions on those topics, if you started to open a folder for them. I think we're gonna get there sooner rather than later.
That's very helpful.
Mike here, I'm on my iPhone. Maybe the tax collector should get involved too. Do we tax these things as meals? Okay.
That's a good, good, good question.
So a- at the moment, and I know this, you know, stems from, from, you know, having attended some of your previous meetings. And also, you know, coming to Hadley often, wondering if this particular. Food truck was permitted and it's just something that pops in my head as I, you know, go to a food truck or see one. Is the town currently doing anything with other than just saying, hey, planning board, what is your thoughts about the food truck? I know that you may have issued at least, you know, some sort of. Decision or 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 made a a comment in support of a particular food truck. Citing certain conditions that you've placed on it. But I know that you don't have anything currently in your zoning regulations and are kind of, you know. Approaching it very appropriately, where, you know, if you don't have regulations, but you still want to understand that. There there probably would be a role usually to determine where a food truck is located and, you know, if there are any impacts to the neighborhood. That you would oversee or at least have, you know, understand that those things are happening in the communities.
Yep, that's what we're starting to gather. The the other buzzword is agri. Yep, that's what we're starting to gather. The, uh, the other buzzword is agritourism.
Yep.
Which is people say, well, we just want them to come visit the farm and stay for a while and spend their money here and uh, and then that leads to the food truck and the beer truck from Jacoby and and there's some overlaps like the gentleman who you probably saw said that, well, I thought, I thought it was okay. The board of health said I could, I could use it here. So again, there are these, that's something we've been working on through this development coordinating committee about not letting people get out ahead of themselves by saying, well, he said it was okay. Well, he doesn't have the last word.
Mi- Mike here again, as I recall at the last, the meeting where this came before us, we're gonna let it roll until there's a complaint, then we're gonna have to address it. So that was what was decided.
Yeah.
In the past, it was pretty easy. I remember when Home Depot wanted to have a food truck like they had in West Springfield, the board of health said no. And I remember Jim was pretty adamant, said, no, it's just not allowed. So that was simple.
So, so new philosophies at the board of health, uh, new directions.
That's exactly correct.
Um, or I should say, yeah, new priorities. So, uh, uh, yeah, we'll gather information. The other thing, just touching back on the master plan update, I think we do want to, uh, maybe revisit that. Just to, um, maybe next time you're in, you, you've already done the work on it. I think you've broken out who's responsible for what. Maybe we need to have, uh, spend some time working on uh, us, you know, picking some, picking some, assigning them.
Yeah, I'm also happy to help, um, you know, engage some of the other. Um, as I, as I work with planning boards, sometimes what happens is they're like, but we need to talk to the, this department or we need to talk to this department. Then I suggest like a meeting of all the boards. Um, and I'm happy to help convene that if the planning board wants to lead, you know, looking at master plan implementation. It's usually a big ask. Um, and if it happens to be a priority for the community, that's something that happens. Um, and I'm happy to help with that. Um, so, yeah, I think at least the planning board can revisit, you know, if there happens to be strategies that you know, they may be responsible for implementing or taking a look at. As I mentioned to the, um, the housing production plan, uh, working group is, um, where I have it, we have a current survey out, a housing survey. Um, and we'll probably be coming up with some um, strategies with regards to that by the end of, we will by the end of the year. Um, that may involve, um, other than the, the, the planning board approving the plan, but may involve maybe taking a look at some regulatory items that the planning board would oversee during in zoning. But there's definitely a lot of work that may have been established. Um, you know, in, in the master plan, but I think it's always good to kind of keep tabs on that. I will say with regards to the food trucks, um, I am working with some communities on this agritourism and creating some standards for that and permitting processes. Um, I'll share, you know, with the board what, what I've, you know, what I've, uh, come to understand, um, and how communities are trying to permit them and also be mindful that they're not trying to say no. But they also wanna understand that there happens to be impacts, especially if you have, um, you know, lots of cars coming into something that didn't usually have a lot of cars coming into um, the property. But yeah, I will, um, go ahead and share those, those resources.
Ken, someone actually told me that they saw that survey and were quite impressed and I can't remember where I could get my hands on it. Is it online? Is it just, uh, you hand you your survey in certain locations on paper or?
It's online. I don't know if we put, if it's on the website. If not, we should, we should suggest that, uh, the town put it on the website. Um, I think it's, um, but you can find them. There's, um, I delivered a hundred copies to the, to the planning board's mailbox.
All right, it's in, in the town hall. You can just pick it up there. You should be getting something in, in the next couple of days, Mark, in your water bill. There is a, uh, okay, an insert with your water bill that tells you how to do it online. Give the QR code and a website to go to, whichever one you prefer.
Okay, cool.
Ken, I had a couple of, two questions, I mean, from two people.
Sure.
Why the hell do you, why should I tell you how much I make?
You don't have to.
You don't have to, then don't. No, exactly. Why, why does it even in there? Most questionnaires, uh, don't even put that in there anymore. Used to be pretty common. Well, it's only in it to get a, to get an opinion, a feeling of the, the general income levels of people responding. In other words, are the richer people or the poorer people advocating for this or that? If you don't wanna put an income in there, don't. No question is mandatory.
Yeah, that, yeah, as, as Jim put, the, there, I think there's some cross tabulations that you can, you can make, um, you know, depending on how good the the side of the sample is.
And what street do you live on? So I could check on the street, for example, um, Megan's Way, I'm, I'm sure those people are making over fifty thousand a year. So, uh, anyways, neither here nor there. No, the whole town lives on Megan's Way.
Yeah, put down you live on French Street.
Yeah. Isn't that now, isn't Megan's Way now a town street?
Yeah. Yes, it was accepted. First million dollar home in Hadley was just sold on that street. I thought it was on East Street Commons.
Or was that Sylvia Heights?
I was right. I was, you know, I digress, but I was, I was riding on the rail trail, giving my buddies a tour of the town. And I'm riding past East Commons and I said, one of our planning board members lives in here. And from over a fence, we heard four doors down.
Agri, agritourism, every once in a while I'd go on YouTube and see how real farmers do it out west. I mean, we're gardeners here. There's no question about it. And this, uh, one young girl grew up on a farm. Very popular on YouTube. She finally came out with some explanation. Please do not visit our farms. Somebody got injured or something like that. We don't want people hanging around our farms. Please do not come. So and the same thing too with a couple of farmers here. Uh, they don't even wanna be noted that they're farmers because that's a little aside. Before we, before we leave with Ken, our, our new is, do we have new legal council for the town?
Yes.
Does Ken know of, uh, any of the?
They're the same, uh, I believe they're the same as have South Hadley in Hampshire County.
Okay.
And Deerfield in Franklin County, but Ken wouldn't have direct knowledge about, uh, Franklin County.
It's funny, Bill, cause I'm actually providing services to the town of Deerfield.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Is you, there is the reception that you, you brought to, when is it, this week? For the new panel council? I believe it's tomorrow. Tomorrow or next week?
There's a meet and greet, right?
Yeah.
It's at the li- uh,
It's the sixteenth, which is our, uh, our next meeting day.
Okay.
Two weeks from today.
Time?
Uh, at noon.
And who is the council again?
I'll, uh, I'll send the invite around again.
I think I did see it, yeah.
I, I don't remember the name. It, it's not a name that I can, can reel off. Quite yet.
Seems like the senior partner used to work for Copeland and Page. If I could run it better, you know, I'll do it on my own. Okay.
Beautiful sunset if you're looking out the window.
Ken, next meeting?
At the board's pleasure. Um, I'd probably be able to at least, um, you know, working with the building department, um, to at least navigate some of these initial questions regarding the permitting guide. I, you know, a month.
Okay. We got a public hearing for thirteen Russell Street on September sixth. Other than that, that's the only thing there. We'll try for that on the twentieth, which is wide open.
Let's do the twentieth.
Okay. Very good. See you on the twentieth.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you. I'm just gonna say.
We should set up a meeting for the housing committee probably sometime early September, Ken.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Ken, hear me. I have to press a button to speak.
No, you don't, Mike. You're live.
Oops, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm glad I didn't give out the secret word.
Okay, um. I might have an invoice to pay.
I have just sent the town and council meet and greet notice around again.
It's Dwyer Associates or something like that?
It's my uncle. Don't, don't, don't give it a second thought.
Not a direct relative, therefore it is not conflict of interest. I do not believe we paid this invoice. This is the one for
Hampshire Gazette?
Hampshire Gazette, that's the ad for Amherst Development, redeveloping the Howard Johnsons. Motion to pay four hundred forty-two dollars and forty-two cents to Daily Hampshire Gazette for said notice.
Four forty-two forty?
Four, four four two point four two.
Point four two. Um, I'll make up, now make that motion.
You have a motion in a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, so Jessica did send me an email that she didn't, she had the plans, but she didn't have a filing fee or an application.
For that one, Bill?
For that one.
I said, I sent them, I will send it again, but I sent them the, uh, the paperwork with it, with a filing fee on it. And they said they received it.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, this, this might have been a week ago or so ago. I just told her that it would, it was going to, uh, it was gonna come in when we had the file, the, uh, recording fee from the Gazette. So, uh, it may have crossed. That was, that's not, that's old news, perhaps.
Okay. Alright. Because I haven't given them the one for the thirteen Russell Street yet. But I did get a price of this. Well, I'll get that going. Yes. Yeah. Okay. I want one comment to build the wire. In your presentation about the affordable housing to the selectmen, I'm glad you recognized my comments. I don't recall giving Plainfield as one of the ones that was, uh, not having any affordable housing, however. I used to, I remember you say that, yeah. I know, that was the straw man he had to throw off there.
Well, you, you got to, uh, no, they're, they have zero and they have little and they're not at risk. I, they probably want to do, they want to have affordable housing. They wanna keep people there, I'm sure. But, uh, you, you're not gonna get a forty B developer in there.
The point, Bill, did you see somewhere in, I don't know, on something I was reading this morning online, the reduction in young people going to school in Franklin County?
Oh, the enrollment was down.
That's right, down like forty-five percent. Was that, was that it, a lot? What's happening up there?
That's probably because the Red Sox traded Christian Vaskins.
Yes, that's right. Okay, enough editorial comments. Okay, um.
Do you have any other updates on what the state's doing on Route nine, in case any of our listeners are wondering?
It's going to be four years and, uh, they, uh, there's a lot of moving parts.
There is an updated page at hadley MA dot O R G. Uh, we, people cannot look to us for updates because we are not in the loop. So, we have nothing to offer, so, uh, I, I'd send people to the, uh, if anyone asks me, I send them to the hadley MA dot O R G on the, on the landing page, there's the town calendar on the left and on the right, there's town news and they've pinned Route nine as the first item there.
Oh, sweet.
And it will give you as much information as the state has chosen to share with us.
Okay. I've also had citizens ask me, and I know you mentioned it at the last meeting, I couldn't remember what was going up in front of the Elaine Center.
That's where they're moving a house.
They're moving a house, okay.
That's that one Barry Roberts' wood from Amherst.
Okay.
It just around one, one residence. Across from the Amherst Creamery on Sunset Avenue, yeah.
Okay. It's not a disparity, okay.
What's the date of the moving? I'd like to see that. It's gonna be at night. Middle of the night they move it. Yes. Past your bedtime, Doc. Anytime is past my bedtime.
Their tent and they start at ten o'clock at night.
What time is that, Tom?
And he started ten PM and it's either the eighth or the tenth feeding time.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's gonna be interesting. Been a long time, been a long times we've seen a house move in Hadley. Pixie was the last one that moved anything. That was years ago. I remember they moved a tobacco barn that Devine's converted to a bigger dairy farm from the Jakimko Farm, Jim. And it has to use across our property. And it was muddy and they got stuck in a ditch there. And I remember when McCreskey bought, bought a tobacco barn from the Sarzinski's and moved it onto their front land.
I'm just gonna mention that, yeah. I wish I could buy it back.
Well, the, the, the funny part of the story, Jim, is the fact that it got stuck there and, uh, someone told my father that he'd probably have to pay taxes for Devine's barn because it's been stuck in the mud for so long. You can imagine the answer. I can imagine your father. Uh, anyways, okay. Um, anybody have anything else?
I have nothing else.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thanks, everybody. See you next week.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you and thank you, Ken.